Good evening and welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Business Meeting and Budget Hearing for May 8th, 2018. This evening is a little bit different because it is our legally required budget hearing in addition to our scheduled business meeting. So to begin this evening, we will hold the public hearing on the proposed 2018-2019 school budget. Because that is the first item of business, we will hold public comment until after Dr. McGowan's update on the budget that we intend to present to the voters next Tuesday. And anyone wishing to comment either on the budget or separately on any other item will provide two different opportunities for that public comment period. So to begin with this evening, Dr. McGowan and our 2018-2019 school budget.
Thank you very much. Let's jump right in. We'd like to point out that in this budget process, that, you know, we've reached a conclusion, I've reported on quite a bit. For one, all the information is on the Budget tab at BCSD.org, so if you'd like more detail about it or have even less hobbies than I do, you can dig right into that. The points of pride included in this budget and things we'd like to point out that what this budget supports. Expansion of our 21st Century Insertion Hardware Program, so continue to watch that program go throughout the district, supported through this budget, particularly through one of the Technology Reserve Requests, which we'll point out at the end of the presentation. Investing, continuing to invest in great instruction, the great instruction that exists in our staff here in the Brighton Central School District. And by the way, couldn't pick a better time than during Staff Appreciation Week than to be talking about a proposed budget that supports the great teaching and experiences that our kids have here in the district. This budget continues to support that, the type of staff development and coaching that happens on a daily basis that helps our teachers continue to grow in their capacity to support kids. Expanding our literacy and math coaching supports are key to that. Additional academic intervention resources to make sure we're providing that above the mandate, which is not mandatory, of course, but in this district it certainly is as we watch kids continue to excel because of that kind of support. Enrichment programs throughout the district, our extended studies program is so important to what we do for all kids in the district. Certainly different types of services at every level, but this budget supports that. Our special education programs, alternative programs are helping kids be successful at unprecedented levels. So we talked about our graduation rate often being the highest it's ever been. It's not just the highest though for some kids, it's the highest for all kids. We've closed those gaps for all students because of these types of approaches and these types of programs for all kids. Our special education offerings, but also maintaining our class sizes and our wide variety of electives at the secondary level. Again, key components to success and success for kids, but also successful instruction are those aspects of our budget. The team teaching structure at the middle school, again, not a mandate, but something that's very important for how we support kids at the middle level. It's a more staff-heavy approach, but it really is something that helps us address the individual needs of kids on each team, the way that's broken down. Our pride in our music and art programs, all of the curricular and extracurricular programs we will be able to continue to offer through this proposed budget, opportunities for athletics at all levels, male sports, female sports, equity and opportunity for all kids. Ability to participate in so many different clubs and activities, particularly at the secondary level, but now also at the middle school, we hold support for some of those activities all the way down through French Road as well. Transportation services that accommodate family needs. We looked at different arrangements and we have a proposal for transportation, but we were very much recognizing what families need and how to provide that transportation. But also transportation for kids that don't attend schools in the district every day. And what I would like to point out is our analysis of kids, non-public school students, which we provide transportation for as a requirement, not that we mind that, but I point out to people and they ask, "Do we have to?" Yes, of course we do, and that's a service we should be providing. But we provide it also on days when we are not in session because that's the service for many of our families who attend non-public schools with a different calendar. That's the service that they expect from us, but also that they should expect. They're not attending our schools each day and that's something that for their school tax dollars certainly makes a big difference. We're able to provide that as well. The budget information I'd like to go through with you is just a summary of our appropriations by function, by object and by location. And then there's additional budget detail by function and summary of our staffing. We'll share very quickly the property tax report card, and these are all the mandated items in a budget hearing that we should be sharing. The school report card, the summary of our fiscal accountability report from the state, the assessors' report, and the administrative compensation information as well. It's also available at BCSD.org where all of this can be found, again, our budget page. The budget summary and the impact on the tax levy, the overall bottom line is this is a $78.5 million budget, I'm sorry, .3. Specifically 78-330-553, so $330,553 in addition to $78 million. That's a change of $2.2 million or 2.95 percent, so a shift of 2.95 percent. We'll show you later where that's actually below the average increase over the last 10 years, but a 2.95 percent increase in spending. The total revenues that we're expecting other than real property taxes, so excluding the tax levy, is $14.6 million, a change of $671,588 or 4.8 percent. So those are additional revenues that are state and federal aids. Unrestricted foundation aid will be $7.95 million and that's a change of $370,622 or 4.9 percent. The amount of fund balance used for the tax levy is $3,456,000, no change from last year. And that's a positive just to point out that every year, so the difference between what we are proposing in the budget and what's actually spent has averaged .4 percent per year over the last 10 years. That goes into reserves. Those reserves are used in a variety of ways, which we'll talk about tonight, but specifically also to offset the tax levy in the following year. The good news is we're not withdrawing more from the savings account to pay our bills. We're able to maintain the same amount. The danger of taking more than that would be the ability to replicate that over time without reducing the expense. So if we think about our household budget and if you depend on taking some money out of your savings account to pay your bills every month and you can't put money back into that savings account and the bill hasn't changed, you will have trouble when that savings account runs out. So we're able to maintain that and not go any further than that, and that's a good thing. Our non-property tax revenues then, add it all up are just over $26 million or a change of $1.2 million. The real property tax levy to be raised for school purposes then, $52,275,299. And that's an increase over last year's tax levy of just over $51 million of 2.36 percent. So normally, we don't read all these numbers, Pat, everybody, I know this is so thrilling and exciting, but because it's a budget hearing, we have to articulate them. 2.36 percent then increase in the total property tax levy to be collected in the school district. And that is at the tax cap limit of 2.36 percent, so we're not over the cap, which is important certainly for taxpayers in the community. What is the summary then by object? Where are we spending our money? This is a great thing. Let me repeat that. This is a great thing. This is not something we're away from. Salaries and benefits, the cost of people is 76 percent in this budget. That is good. That's where your investment as a community should be going towards the great work that people are doing in this district each and every day. We're glad that that's where the majority of the money is going, the vast majority. If you saw it going towards new lawnmower equipment or furniture, those types of things, which there's a need to replace those also. But the idea that we're investing in people, which is really what is making the difference for our kids each day. The people here tonight, the people that we celebrate this week during Staff Appreciation, but that our kids each and every day walk into their classrooms, that's where the investment should be and that's where the vast majority of the spending is. Our BOSI's cost is 9 percent, supplies and services 13 percent, and then debt and transfers 2 percent. Again, salary and benefits making up 76 percent of that. How does it break down in terms of the three-part budget? We're required to report a three-part budget. The program budget, administrative and capital program, 81 percent. Again, that's where most of the funding should be going towards the program budget. The actual administration of the program to our kids. The administrative component, essentially that overhead cost for administering the program is just 10 percent. And the capital part of the budget then comes out to 9 percent. So we'll see that increase over time as the voters approved to capital projects last year. And although they approved to borrow that money and that's outside the general fund, the debt service is not. So we'll see that number increase over time as well, which some of that should, again, as we've talked about revitalizing our facilities. So what did we do then to balance the budget? Our recommendations to you, we're going to basically have a, this is a hanging-on budget. It's very vanilla, so to speak. There's not a lot of excitement in this. This is, we are maintaining the program that we have this year going into next year. So we're not able to add some of the new things that we might like to if there was more funding available, but being respectful of what is available, this is where we're at. Other than health and safety areas, we have a basically a staffing freeze. So we will be adding some nursing support at the middle school, which will provide some equity among the buildings. But also we have reserved some funding for potential security enhancements over time in the budget based on recommendations that will come from the security community, so there's some money reserved for that. We've scaled some of our staffing based on enrollment trends. This simply means that class size at the elementary is able to be maintained, but because some of the larger enrollment bubble is moving into the middle school and into the high school, some sections are able to be reduced, one particularly at French Road and one at the middle school at the sixth grade level. We're reducing our overtime allocation for operations and maintenance, which will have some impact on some availability in the evenings and on the weekends for outside activities. Increasing our reliance on federal grants, and these are, there's three items here that I want to mention to you are the heads-up because later on we'll have to think about this. If we're putting programs and positions into federal grants, which the current Education Secretary has made clear, some of those grants will be likely reduced over time. We'll have to bring those positions back into the general fund, but we can rely on some of that revenue right now for those positions. We have to defer some of our planning for full-day case, so this is really important. We will have full-day K in 2021. Say it again. We will have full-day K in 2021. No matter what the Democratic Chronicle may or may not report accurately or inaccurately, we will have full-day K and it has nothing to do with Pittsburgh. We will have it. We have been putting money and positions into the budget over time to get there in a way that we think makes a tremendous amount of sense. We're not hinging one particular budget or that decision on new aid, anything like that. We're saving for that over time. But we couldn't put extra positions in the budget this year and then cut programming for kids now. So we will have to come back to that and make sure that in future budgets we can make up those positions prior to implementing in 2021. So that will still happen. This just means that we can't reserve as many positions right now. On the right side, I'll jump to the last bullet and say we're also deferring some of our funding for our debt service. So our down payment will be slightly smaller as we go into the capital project than what we might like it to be, but that doesn't mean we're not doing it. That doesn't mean anything other than we will have to make up for that when we figure out our principal and interest payments going forward on that debt service. We had been trying to put more money into that capital reserve to get to that place. It just is simply a change in our long-term strategy to do that to preserve program for the now. And then up on the right-hand side, the other items are implementing program caps in terms of our ACAD, co-curricular activities, extracurricular activities, less of a blank slate for that. Not dramatic changes and reductions, but some changes will have to take place as we have to cap some of that in order to control that expense, again, so that we can essentially freeze that expense in the budget going into next year. And then limiting our equipment budgets, other than what we need to maintain the current program, this is the constant theme, and tighten up some of our risk provisions, so the areas where we have provision, if we go a little bit over in one line. Over time, you can continue to tighten those up as you learn based on the experience in each of those lines, what we can do or what we can't do. So we're able to tighten up some of those risks going forward. So what is the trend in over time in our budgets? As I said, the proposed increase 10 years over time has been an average of 3 percent. We're under that this year at 2.95 percent. And then the average increase in the actual spending that took place before we could take that .4 and put it into reserves has been 2.6 percent. And right now, we're looking at a 2.36 percent proposal in the tax levy to be collected. The average increase being 2.3 percent over time. I would expect our state and federal aid then, that number's interesting. It says a 3.7 percent actual increase. It should be a lot higher than that. That is also based, it's a little bit of a deceiving number because it's based on money spent because reimbursable aids are included in that number. And then over time, we've been able to keep in the reserves a total increase of $2.7 million over those 10 years. Again, a good prudent financial strategy. Quick summary of what the scheduled reserves are going forward. We have several different types of reserves, capital unemployment insurance, tax surcharge, employment benefits accrued liability, and the retirement contribution. And this is listed, all information on the website. So to the relief of the crowd, next to me, I'm not going to read every number at you, but again, this is simply for reference. But we have intended use in 1819, which in a future slide I will explain to you, each one of the withdrawals from the reserve. This information just being provided for documentation. The estimated revenues going into next year, 1718, of course, the comparison, very, very similar. A slight tick-up in the state aid number. Our property taxes make up the bulk of what we are using as revenue, which is why state aid does actually have such a big impact on it. When we already have a large amount of our revenue coming from property tax cap, oh, sorry, property tax levy, it's a big bill. So any impact on that, of course, makes a big bill just a little bit bigger. Fund balance will be about 4 percent of our revenue going into next year, all other revenue being 8 percent then. So the assessments in town, complicated topic. I would just like to make it as simple as possible for people. Assessments went up. Your rate will go down. We will still just collect 2.36 percent in total addition for next year. So the amount of money we're collecting from property taxpayers next year in total, the levy being collected, is 2.36 percent of an increase. No matter what somebody's assessment, we're not collecting then more than that because people's assessments went up. The rate, the multiplier on the value of somebody's home will go down pretty significantly if their assessment went up. The town sets assessments. The total value of the properties in town have not all been determined yet. We don't know those, so we can't give people even an estimated rate because they've changed pretty dramatically. Some people, in the way that equalization will work or the reassessment, the concept behind it is that if somebody's home was undervalued relative to their neighbor's home, they will pay a larger share than they may have before because they were paying less than what they were supposed to pay. And maybe their neighbor's home was overvalued, and so they'll now pay a little bit less because they were paying too much. That's the general concept. It's not for us to decide. The notion that we're trying to make sure we get across to people is if your assessment went up, your rate will go down. You're generally going to pay approximately, depending on whether you were on the low end or the high end of what was fair, as determined by the assessor, 2.36 percent more because that's the total levy we're collecting. But everybody's fair share of the pizza is being divided up a little bit differently going forward, again, based on how their home was reassessed by the town. That is yet to be determined. We will not collect more than what the levy is approved of by taxpayers. So what are those withdrawals from each of the reserves that we mentioned to you? There's a capital reserve that US taxpayers have established of $8.5 million. We have to ask permission to withdraw that. We're asking for permission to withdraw $1.5 million. And that's to take care of a wide variety of smaller capital projects within the district so that those don't have to be in the general fund and be more of a burden in that general budget being presented. So this has no other tax impact. We will be going back out and asking for reauthorization to do a chiller project at the middle school because when you first asked for permission to do it, the bids came back too high. So now we need to go back out again and ask for permission to withdraw to do that work. And then again, a variety of other smaller projects in the district, which make up the $1.5 million. The Technology Reserve Fund has a current balance of $1.5 million. We also have to ask permission to go out and spend $500,000 and that will help us expand the 21st Century Program, but also take care of building out our wireless network and all of the other regular maintenance types of items for any kind of technology program. Again, coming out of a reserve, not coming out of the general fund, so no impact on taxes going into next year. We're well aware with all these reserves, the impact on taxes is that your money that we're collecting eventually goes there when it is left at the end of the year. So it's not that there's never an impact. There certainly is, but not in next year's tax rate or tax levy. It's not those tax dollars specifically. And then again, other replacements throughout the district like CAD Lab at the high school, staff laptop replacements, that's their workstation. And the student device replacements and AV hardware replacements as well. We established several years ago, asked for permission from the community to establish, and you did establish a capital reserve, I'm sorry, a reserve for bus purchase. Thinking that this might be seed, might be able to go back to our own transportation system. It is not financially feasible. After fits and starts and lots of research, we've determined that's not going to be something we can do. What we would like to do though is withdraw from that $125,000 to purchase three passenger vans. Those passenger vans will allow us a lot more flexibility. One for specific programs, like the St. John Fisher 18 to 21-year-old transition program. Wonderful program, but allowing those kids to have different work experiences, a variety of places. But this kind of more nimble transportation as opposed to having to charter transportation will help us get kids there. Smaller teams, clubs and activities will also be able to use those vans. It does not require a CDL license. A certificated teacher who presumably is also a licensed driver will be able to use the van to be able to take those small trips. Provides us a lot more flexibility, so we're hopeful that the community will accept the purchase of those as well. And then some change in our home-to-school walking distance. There's some confusion about this, so I want to make it really clear. Right now at the K-2 level, kids who live within a quarter mile are supposed to walk to school. They don't. We pick them up. We've been picking them up. We've established legally safe zones to be able to do that. We would like to though, ask that that be codified by taxpayers in approving a new walk zone. You have to have everything approved by taxpayers relative to transportation. So this particular referendum is simply asking that we now make that walk zone quarter, I'm sorry, an eighth of a mile, which would mean everybody would still, there's no change. Everybody would still get the transportation we're already providing. It's a technical change we're asking for the community to approve. Grades three through five would stay at the quarter mile. No change in that. Grades six through 12, right now, what we would like it to be is three-quarters of a mile. Right now, seven through 12, it is a quarter, three-quarters of a mile. Sixth graders, it is not. This probably goes back to the days when we had K-6 buildings and seven through 12, junior high was all together. We would like it to be the same. It just makes no sense that sixth graders have a different walk distance than seven through 12. We're very tired of seven through 12 kids getting waved at and getting harassed by sixth graders riding by them on the bus. I'm just kidding. I don't know how much that actually happens, but we'd like it to be all the same and be consistent. So the community has to approve that. The total summary is a $78.33 million budget or an increase of 2.95 percent in spending. We think this responsibly controls our increases in spending without harming our educational program at all. When other districts are talking about a lot of reductions in people, staff and programs, we're very glad to be able to hang on to what we have, continue to support the great work that our staff is doing each day. And we think it reflects our continued investment in our priority areas. Safety, security, wellness, rigorous coursework for all kids, creativity and innovation, instructional technology, diversity and equity. That would result in a 2.36 percent at the cap, not breaking the cap number in the tax levy, right at what the average has been over a long period of time. Tuesday, May 15th, is the day to vote on that. All day at the high school, 7 to 9. Please come early. I can't say come often, but please come, make sure you vote. Our candidate election as well takes place on that evening. And please get your spaghetti and the L. Lewis spaghetti dinner sponsored by the Brighton Colinas's that night as well. So the sauce is so much better than it was years ago and there's an extra meatball in it for you. Any questions?
Well, let's open it up to the public for public comment. Any members of the public that are here this evening that would like to ask a question regarding to the budget specifically, anything that Dr. McGowan touched on or maybe something that he might not have. If you raise your hand, I'll recognize you and I will ask you to come to the podium so we can capture the audio. So, yes, please. Welcome.
Thanks. Thanks for having me. And I want to start just by thanking everybody for all their work. Schools are fabulous. Children are happy. Getting a great education.
Some of us know you, but could you give us your name and address, please?
Susan Hughes Smith, 453 Edgewood Avenue.
Thank you.
Yep. So you all are fabulous. However, I am somewhat philosophically opposed to policy decisions that lack sound statistical basis. And when the tragedy at Sandy Hook took place, there was an investment made in security. And Dr. McGowan and I had a very heated exchange over this. We put in buzzer systems that actually, same kind that was at Sandy Hook, that didn't stop that tragedy. We hired some staff. There was no statistical evidence given that any of those measures would actually amount to improved safety. I communicated with Dr. McGowan a couple of times on this issue, let it go since then, but my concern was this is a very slippery slope. And at the time, I asked Dr. McGowan how much this was costing taxpayers and it was $400,000 was the figure that I was cited. And that was several years ago. And now we're asked to put another $100,000 towards safety. And I don't know what the figure is this year. That was a number of years ago. So I don't, I don't know. And it's not broken out in the budget as to how much this security is costing us. But I really question this investment. Statistically, schools are about the safest place a child could be. Statistically, there is less violence in schools today than there was in the 1990s. So why are we subjecting ourselves and our children to this illusion that we need to have this some kind of police officer presence? That's a whole nother thing that I'm concerned about. But why we are increasing money spent on this when we could be supporting programs, extracurriculars, not looking at reducing those investments that are far more meaningful for our children? So maybe it's a rhetorical question, I'm not sure, something to think about. Kind of tangential to that issue is thinking about the implications of our actions on different groups of people. So as I already have shared with you, I'm not a big fan of seeing security people. It doesn't make me comfortable. It doesn't make me feel more secure. When 9/11 happened and now there were armed troops in Grand Central Station, I didn't feel better about that. I felt worse about that, okay? I recognize that a whole lot of people in America seem to think that it's great to have armed people around. But I hope that the educated folks in this room recognize that there is a very distinct segment of our population for whom that is not true.
Sue, can I just run for one second, because I want to make sure this is clear in case anybody's watching?
Right.
We don't have any staff member here at Brighton armed at all.
No, no, I know your staff is not armed. I am under the impression, as I have seen the police vehicles sitting in front of the high school repeatedly, I'm understanding from my children that the police officers are in the school more than they were before. I don't have a good figure as to how much they're there.
Would you like me to clarify that too? Sure. So we have two things happening. One, we work really closely with the Brighton Police Department, but in communication we sent out to parents, it explained that we have directed foot patrols now. That was something that Chief Henderson had talked to us about a long time ago and we had worked on. The notion of police officers getting to know students better, not handling day-to-day discipline, walking through the buildings, understanding the layout of our buildings better by being in them, but basically interacting and creating better relationships with students, we thought was a real positive. And so that is why they're there, but
Sure.
They're not there for a day-to-day enforcement. The police officers doing directed foot patrols through the building with our staff members, interacting in those positive ways are not likely to prevent a tragedy from happening. That's not the intent. It's really more to develop those relationships.
And Sue, it's also an extension of the Brighton Police Department and the Town of Brighton Initiative on community policing. So we've had a great relationship for a long, long period of time with both the town and Mark Henderson and the police department. And very early this year, we began working with Mark and the police department on a major initiative around pedestrian traffic and bicycle safety at 12 Corners. And that has evolved into additional programming at the middle and the high school that does involve more interaction with our staff, our students, families, with the Brighton Police Department, which has overall been very, very good and very, very positive. And as Dr. McGowan says, has said to you and said to others, and we've communicated to parents, their primary purpose is not there to enforce any specific disciplinary issue or code or anything like that, so.
But to your point, it happened right after Parkland, so it
Yes, it did.
And it, I will say to you, it definitely was a reaction to, all right, we've talked about this, let's get it moving. So I want to make sure I'm acknowledging that too.
Right. And, and again, statistically, there's less violence in our schools today. So I question whether these types of actions are necessary and whether they promote a culture of fear rather than adults taking the very needed position to say to our kids, "You are right that there is far too much gun violence in America today and that needs some real work, but you are safe here." That schools are the safest place for you to be might be more comforting than promoting the culture of fear and that we need to have the police presence. I understand that you all feel like your relationship with the police is great and I'm sure there's good reasons for that. Has anyone asked, sat down with the Black Student Union, to talk to them how they feel about the presence of those police officers? Surely the police officers could understand the lay of our school at a time when the kids aren't in the school.
Actually, Sue, there's been a lot of those types of conversations that have happened. So I'm sure offline, be happy to talk to you more about that, like in the right format. But Mark Henderson came and did a great session with the kids during flex period. All kids could come, pizza with the chief. Naturally pizza attracted quite a crowd.
I'm sure it did.
But with a great dialogue about how people felt and we need to continue to be sensitive to that. So whether he has met specifically with the Black Student Union, again, there are several of these conversations that have taken place, which I'd be happy to talk to you about. I can't say if he asked that question specifically.
I'm glad conversations are taking place. I don't doubt that conversations are taking place. But I just would, wanted to raise the issue in a pretty much all-white room that not all people perceive the police in the same light as well that not all people perceive the police in the same light, as well educated, middle-class and upper-class white people. And if we want to be sensitive to diversity, which I know as a community we want to be sensitive to, maybe we should work harder than it is apparent to me, than it is apparent to students I've spoken to, that those conversations are taking place, that those voices are being heard and that we're finding some solution that makes everyone feel comfortable. Because when students feel uncomfortable with school, they're not going to perform as well in school. And I think that's our number one priority. And I know this issue is a little sidestep from the, I don't know how much we're spending on security in general, so I don't want to lose the fact that I also question whether another four or five hundred thousand dollars, that that's money well spent. But obviously you all are in charge and able to make those decisions. I'm asking you please to look at some statistics, to be a voice of reason. If we could move our society back in the direction of making decisions based on fact, not on unfounded emotional fear, that would be fabulous and keep up all the great work. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much Sue, and thank you for your comments, we appreciate your participation. Any other members of the public who are here that wish to speak to the budget or to ask any questions on the budget? Does anyone wish to ask a question or make a comment on any other topic or matter that is of interest at the present time? One thing I will, as a preface, because our election day on Tuesday includes a contested Board of Education race, this evening's comments cannot include any comments either endorsing or opposing any particular individual candidate. So other than that, all topics are on the table, so yes, Sue.
This one hopefully will be a little quicker. Um, so my youngest son took the ELA state exams. Surprisingly, they were done on a computer. My son doesn't know how to type, but the written portion of the exam was done on a computer. Was that a state decision or is that a district decision?
Debbie, would you like to speak to that too?
Sure.
So we actually, that was a district decision. We, the state has been providing computer-based assessments for two years now, recognizing that in twenty twenty, all students will be taking all their assessments on a computer. So we didn't have the option. And so as we started to take a look at, you know, what could we best do to prepare our students, we felt like giving down the heads up and ourselves as a system, the experience of doing it prior to when it was like drop-dead deal time was the best thing. Our teachers were informed about a year ago, we've been working to prepare the students. We've been doing, you know, again, increased opportunities to compose online, to read online, and we'll continue to do that in preparation for what is twenty twenty when we no longer have the option.
Sue, I only saw Debbie ready to jump up, which I was not trying to throw her under the bus, but it was a great answer. But we wanted to make sure too, we had the capacity technology-wise to handle that, which clearly the state had issues this year.
Sure, sure.
Wasn't internal, but it was our effort and also to understand what more we need to do to prepare kids as we move towards it.
Right, right, so I, I question the state's educational knowledge if they think that composing on a computer for eight and nine-year-olds who don't know how to type is a good plan. Have you ever seen an eight and nine-year-old type on a computer?
Yes, several of them, but
Right, so imagine them trying to think of what they want to say and then they're thinking, oh wait, but T and H and E the, what did I want to say? And then thinking about it and then doing it again for the next word and the next word. And I raise this point because although I am in favor of on-time tests, my son sat in a room taking this test the entire school day with a half-hour break for lunch, which considering that much older students taking things like SATs, get a break after an hour and a half, struck me as really odd. So the second part of this is if we're going to have an on-time test, whose decision was it to roll out on-time testing in a format such that, and he was not alone, that these eight and nine-year-olds are sitting the entire school day in front of a screen with the exception of half-hour lunch, no recess, no phys ed, things that might have actually stimulated some activity and some mental, you know? Was that a district decision?
So, no, the on-time nature is the state system.
That they have to take it all in one sitting on that day?
Correct.
Okay.
So we've talked, you and I have talked about state testing before too.
Oh, we have.
Right, so I would say too, a couple of different things. One, that untimed is a response to the heavy criticism that the state received and I think was an issue for you too, the stress around time.
I'm in favor of on-time tests.
The other issue though, the, this concept in the opt-out movement around the fact that there's not enough value for teachers in that assessment. The notion behind computer-based testing is that over time we'll get much more, I don't think I should say instantaneous, but much quicker feedback so that teachers can actually use that in real time, like we do for map testing and have that information available. So I'm not, I'm, I'm not going door-to-door trying to sell this because I've got problems with it too.
Sure.
But I want to clarify, that's why we've gotten to this place. The state is now asking, okay, tell us what you want to do, timed or on-time, because which one is better for kids? There's a lot of questions being asked like that, like yours, which I think are really good, good questions.
I mean, I, I'm sure all the intentions are good.
Yeah.
You know, I just question how it rolls out. If you're putting very responsible little children in front of a computer and saying, do your best work, like maybe some adults need to interact a little more to prod the kids along, to hurry up. Maybe you don't tell them you have all day.
Yeah.
You know, maybe you tell them, you got three hours, and then when three hours comes up, you see if they need more time. I don't know, and there seems like there needs to be something in place, because kids should not be sitting in a room the entire day with one half-hour break, even if it's an on-time test.
And if the state allows that, we would do that. Because there's no time limit, they wouldn't allow us to say you have three hours. They do allow us to make a professional decision when we think that the student has exhausted that effort and that they should move on. And I think we should be thinking then next year about, how do we observe that, what do we do, when is the right time to do that?
Sure, because
You also have kids who say, no, I want to keep going, and so there's this balance.
Absolutely, and I, and I don't doubt that if you had asked my son that, that he would have done that, because he's a responsible child.
Yep.
Who wants to do his best work for you. Though he now informs me that he hates ELA and that's a direct result of this testing. So again, there is nothing that that test is going to tell me or my son's teacher that we don't already know about my son. So the state of New York's insane policy to test every kid grades three through eight in this manner is ridiculous. And I know we're not on the same page with that, Dr. McGowan, and that's my professional opinion. I'm an educator too, I think it's ridiculous. There's nothing you're learning about my son that, that we don't already know. But I need to know before I subject him to this again, what actually is going to happen. So now I know what questions I need to ask for the next time and I appreciate you listening and I appreciate you thinking about how, how we can improve.
We may not agree, but I certainly respect it, so thanks Sue.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your input. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board on any other issue or comment or question on anything? Alright, then seeing that we have no additional this evening, board, I'll entertain a motion for approval of our evening agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Martha and seconded by Larry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. A motion please for approval of minutes for the April twenty-four, twenty eighteen education meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Marvin, seconded by Andrea. Does anyone have any corrections or additions, deletions to those minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. This evening, we're happy to have and receive two different program evaluations that have been underway for quite some time. First up, our, the work that's been done this year on our career and technology education program evaluation, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Baker to begin.
Sure. Just wanted to take a second to kind of introduce our program evaluation process in general. As the board knows, our program evaluation process is really our opportunity to take a deeper look at how our curriculum and instructional practices are serving the needs of our students. We're really proud of this process and over the past few years have really honed this process into allowing us to take what I call a deeper dive into our program. That's not to say that on a yearly basis that our teachers aren't consistently saying, you know, what worked, what didn't work, what could we do better? But, but the program evaluation process is really an opportunity for us to look at a K-12 perspective across grade levels, really that continuum of experiences for our students so that we can ensure that not only are what they're learning is the most important, but it's the most relevant to what the current thinking is. Tonight, we have two program evaluation process, the finals of, the final results for the career and technical education as well as the health education process. I'd like to thank the committee members who are here tonight because they really have gone above and beyond. These folks started last year in the summer, really looking at this, at their respective programs. They've been meeting monthly, sometimes half-day, full-day, really trying to unpack what was important about their program, but more importantly, how are our Brighton kids doing against the sets of standards? And so they're here tonight to present to you the results of that program eval. So we're starting with our career and tech ed program. I'd like to introduce Zach O'Neil, Mike Blake and Sam Rizzo to, to share the results with you.
Welcome, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thanks for giving us the opportunity. First of all, I want to thank the parents who served on the committee. I mean, they were taking time out from, from work and families and everything and they put a lot of time and I really appreciate them. And also the board members, I mean, work also, running back and forth and work. But we really appreciate all the support that you gave us.
Absolutely. We had eighteen members on our committee, it was quite large. And it's, it's a different thing evaluating career and technical education because we have family, consumer sciences, technology education and business kind of all mixed into one. Having eighteen members is awesome, it gives us so much perspective and the ability to really see what community members, parents and our children are doing in all these areas that are so important for their careers and their futures. We really had four objectives. Our objectives were to first gain the comprehensive view of our CTA program as a whole. Then we wanted to evaluate our curriculum and instruction for gaps and areas where we could grow, potentially fill in some of those gaps and improve our program. Then we wanted to evaluate existing expectations for students across the board. Expectations that we have individually within our different content areas as well as the, underneath the CTE umbrella. And then we wanted to compare our curriculum areas to those of surrounding districts.
Okay, our goals, CTE goals, and again, that's, that's technology education, family and consumer science and business education. Combined, students will be able to use appropriate technological tools, apply knowledge, values and skills to be contributing citizen in the global community, which is tied into the mission of the district, okay? As well as developing appropriate soft skills, which are so important now in the, in the work world. Things like leadership, communication, flexibility, adaptability, teamwork. Have an empathy for others in the workplace, problem-solving, work ethic, okay? Think critically and creativity, creativity. Being creative is very important, we try to encourage that, brainstorming, research, selecting and applying the problem-solving methods in a rehearsed and unrehearsed situations. And also using multimedia to develop and produce and communicate those solutions. Okay, also, practice the allocation of resources with an emphasis in time management, okay? It's connected to some of the soft skills that we're pushing. Self-direction, self-directed classrooms. Recognize the interrelationships of the disciplines and apply knowledge of core subjects and twenty-first century themes to solve these problems, okay? Gain proficiency on the problem-solving process, okay? And have the kids take risks, okay? Responsible risks, remain open to continuous learning. Okay, students should be confident to challenge themselves in a wide range of courses, okay? What we offer, I think, is a, is a great opportunity to explore, to have the time to take electives and they shouldn't feel that pressure to, to take the AP courses because we feel our courses prepare the students well for college and for the work world, for their future. Students should be knowledgeable about potential career opportunities and the related necessary requirements. They should be able to locate and utilize resources for exploring potential career interests.
So some of our organizational supports under curriculum, we want to utilize Edactrina. It's really going to allow our departments to continuously evaluate, store and update our curriculum, instruction. You know, we asked ourselves, you know, do each of our subject areas have our curriculum aligned with its respective standards? And what are those standards and are we using common standards? Also, are we engaging all of our students? Demographics, we looked at, you know, how do our classrooms reflect the Brighton student body as a whole in each of our CTE areas? And facilities are a major factor in what we do because it can be so hands-on, interactive, real-world-esque. And how will future renovations allow us to keep content within these curriculum trends? We had a number of different data sets, we had counselor focus groups to meet with them, see what they're communicating with our kids, what the kids are communicating with them. We had focus groups of middle and high school age students to see what they thought about and what knowledge they gained from their CTE experience in their grade levels. We took a look at historical demographic breakdowns of each course and had many different site visitations. We visited EMCC, the Eastern Remote Career Center. We visited East Rochester, Spencerport and Webster School Districts to see what their programs were like and to see how we stacked up with them and what we could do better.
Yep, another, just touching on some of those visits, the East Rochester visit, they offer a life skills class that we're very interested in exploring. And Spencerport, Spencerport and Webster are in the process of mandating financial literacy, taking a personal finance course. And also they, they have some online offerings that we were looking at in those two districts.
I had the privilege, along with a few of our other group members, to attend the State University of New York at Aswego, our SUNY Fall Technology Conference, this happens every, I think they might be on year forty, something like that. It's just a gathering of the great technology education people in the northeastern portion of our country here. There was a lot of information shared, especially with the change that came down with the tech mandate at the middle school level. So that was really helpful. And then we also took a look at our curriculum maps that we do have for TCMS and BHS. So what did we find? Well, through our data, we actually found quite a bit. We found out that we utilize a lot of up-to-date software applications, represent current trends within our curriculum. We all invite guest speakers at some point that provide real-life examples and discussions regarding possible career choices and opportunities. Facts, business and tech. They do all offer a variety of clubs and different projects that invite our kids to explore leadership skills, which is really important in each of our areas. Middle school students are readily able to recall important topics and lessons covered in their classrooms. Middle school tablets that we have now have resulted in students actually being more productive. And students surveyed really wanted to learn more about financial literacy and essential life skills. They definitely conveyed that to us in our surveys. We also found that some of our eighth-grade students are not effectively in form of the offerings at the high school. Students who make career-related choices after graduation need to be celebrated. Our courses help make them more career-ready, so I feel like we should highlight more of what they're doing in the community and present that, we found that. Our courses are very rigorous and often provide real-life learning experiences. Our courses are very rigorous and often provide real-life learning experiences that other courses simply cannot, whether it be due to facilities, tools, equipment, materials, management skills, resource management types of things. And this concept needs to be relayed to students, parents, as well as the counselors so that they can spread that information among our younger students that are, you know, having the chance to take those electives. Our club offerings, you know, they really do lead students into some careers. We have IDCA, FBLA, Future Business Leaders of America Robotics, Green Thumb, among others. And students are actively participating in these each and every year. Students need to be aware of EMCC offerings at an earlier age. The Eastern Merrow Community College Program is rigorous and holds kids to high standards and need to reach certain requirements to be eligible for it. If they knew earlier, they might be more inclined to take that route. Our high school internship program has expanded greatly over the last two years, and many more students are participating in shadowings and internships. Some students are unaware of what's listed in our program of studies. All CTE courses put students in situations where they need to think creatively and critically. Our students provided that as feedback. New course offerings have allowed our students unique learning experiences, such as our virtual business, video gaming, understanding, design, and energy and sustainability courses. And our high school business education department offers New York State CTE endorsed pathway of marketing management. AP students generally don't take our business or technology courses nearly as much as we'd like them to. And eighth grade students are automatically enrolled in music classes when moving to ninth grade, and this tends to limit their elective opportunities when they get to the high school level.
Okay, some academic and organizational recommendations we came up with. We need to, we need to develop a better communication plan to help parents, students, counselors, to let them know more about what, what we're, what's being taught in our, in our classes, what's being offered, okay? Identify pathways to potential careers for the students. Connect careers to the Festival Ideas event would be a great idea. Create Career Day to take place at all Brighton buildings. Incorporate CT awareness in freshman seminar. And explore the increased use of Naviance to include parental access and information dissemination. Okay, organization-wise, we're, we're going to update all curriculum maps, and we have been doing that, and align them to our department goals. Embed deliberate instruction in time management and social skills, those, those soft skills, those life skills that are so important. Move sixth grade tech to seventh grade to eliminate redundancy and to also open up space for a, a computer literacy course. Include a facts curriculum at the BHS level. And mandate a personal finance life 101 course as a requirement for graduation.
And that's what we have.
Again, thank you very much for your time. Is there any questions?
No, but you're going to be hearing from me about Festival of Ideas, so.
Okay, good. Oh, yeah, that's right.
Ding ding ding.
It's a good connection.
What, what comment ambitious?
You know, it's funny, Marv, you say that because, you know, Mike, thanks for acknowledging. Larry and I were very fortunate to be the board members serving with this group. And, you know, Zach and Mike, thank you for presenting on behalf of the group. As with all of our curriculum evaluation programs, folks don't, I think, often don't realize the vigor with which we go about this project. And this group in particular, I sat on this the last time in the cycle we reviewed it, and this was a wholly different effort this time. And it has nothing to do with those who did it last time. It's just that this group started right in the summer. The first day, we toured facilities. Let's go look at what we have, which was a great idea to get started. And I think it's a very difficult program eval because of the three different disciplines because within those three, there are multiple aspects of what they do. So it was an eye-opener, I think, for us for as much as we were able to participate because multiple long sessions, this group invested a lot of time in this effort, and I commend the group, and I think, I look forward to the further conversation about the recommendation phase. We talked a lot about, and it's funny that it was mentioned because this has come up more and more with parents, the need to communicate younger and younger to parents and students about these opportunities, especially in the world we're in today, and not at eighth and ninth and tenth grade when it might be past time to plan accordingly. The other aspect of it is the very, very fast-growing, not only in New York State but across the country, of personal finance, while not always mandated, but strongly encouraged. And we read and we researched, and those of you that went out and saw, and this group went out in the field extensively in all your different areas. I appreciate that. But, and that area struck me as one that very, very positive results around the country implementing that personal finance and those life skills type things, so Larry, I don't know if you have anything to add, but.
That's great.
Yeah, I mean.
No, I think there was breadth and depth. I can go back to when I was in tenth grade and we took Preparation for Independent Living as a life skills course, which taught you about first and last month's rent and things like that.
You can make, do your laundry?
Yeah, thanks.
Shall I still concern about the question?
Thanks very much, yeah. No, but there's just a whole bunch of application, and personal finance is becoming a huge issue from that standpoint, so absolutely. And a ton of work was done, a lot of visits. We saw what other schools were doing as well.
But, but the entire group, large group of parents, as you mentioned, very devoted, dedicated group all the way through. So thanks to everybody for all the hard work, and we look forward to really plowing through the, as we always do, you know, now we'll spend time going through the eval and, and try to parse out under Debbie's direction some of the future steps. So thank you to everybody.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
So one slight change before we move to our next program evaluation. We are in deference to our student representative this evening, going to allow them to report out now as they have multiple things to do this busy time of the year. So Piper Davis, we welcome, and I'm assuming it's the time we introduce our new representative. So I will turn this over to you.
Would you like to introduce yourself?
Yeah, hi, my name's Tula. I'm going to be the new rep to the board next year, so I'm just coming by and observing meetings so that I can see what goes on here.
And you haven't left yet, so.
I have not left yet.
What's your sibling?
Sibling.
And what year are you?
Same year, sorry, 2019.
Okay, great. You're welcome, and we look forward to getting to know you a little bit further, and we appreciate you volunteering to take on this work.
Thank you, touche.
Alrighty, so AP Week started on Monday. That's super fun and nice and stressful. I took one of three today, so it's a nice relief off my shoulders. As evidence, the new executive council members have been elected, so I guess you'll start seeing those new faces around, hers included. Class council elections start, I think, the week that our meeting today, elections are on May 25th, which is also Spring Fest, so that's exciting. Junior prom was last weekend. I can say it was a success. And then senior ball, I think, is the next weekend, and then bash and banquet and graduation are all coming up in the next couple of weeks. And then decision day was May 1st, so it was really cool to see all the seniors wearing their college apparel and all the, like, posters hanging up of where they're going to be next year after they leave Brighton. So, yeah, that's what's going on at the high school right now.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. And it's a sprint, it's a sprint to the end of the year.
Yes, almost there.
And Piper, thank you very much for your service.
Of course, it's been a pleasure.
We appreciate getting to know you and your reporting out, and thank you so much. And you're really not going anywhere but turning over the task, so thank you so much.
Passing the torch.
And you two folks, and only you two folks, are welcome to adjourn if you would like to other activities, but you're also welcome to stay. It's entirely up to you. But we, now, we're going to move to our. It's always a hard sell. It's easy, it's easy even when there's treats over there, so that's entirely fine. So thank you so much, both of you. Now, this evening, we're going to hear about our health curriculum review. Again, I took, I turn it over to Dr. Baker as she brings us back to order here.
And just very quickly, I just wanted to introduce John Feltes and his team. Worked actively this year, throughout the year, to evaluate our health curriculum. So, John.
So we did spend some time this school year working on our health curriculum review. The meeting dates are on the board, as you can see, some of the committee members that are here today. Tom Hall, Nate Meyer, who had played a big role in this process as well. Judy Wegman, Aaron Dwyer, Janice Mix, myself, and our parent representatives, Ellie Rosenblum, who was able to make it here, and Ellen Puthier, who also played a role in what we were able to find in, in the recommendation that you'll see at the end of our PowerPoint. So when we first got together, one of the first things we wanted to do is try to really take a look at what the goals and objectives are for our students and then what they were expected to leave Brighton High School with through a health program. And then along with that, be able to look at the different indicators for the performance that they would be able to seek out and be able to do within those objectives and reaching those objectives. Couple of pieces that we wanted to really highlight, some of the elements that we took a look at in this process in trying to come up with the best way to find the recommendation. One of them was nineteen-year study that we'll talk about a little later on in some of the very, I think there was two elements, which were social and emotional control and success, which led to higher graduation rates in college at the kindergarten levels where that started. So it's pretty interesting when we look at some of the recommendations. Our Brighton Youth at Risk survey, which we have a slide to highlight some of the importances that our students do face within our buildings. And then the bright, in high school, middle school, and French Road curriculum that is on, working on getting an Edoctrina, there'll be a slide on that as well, our New York State standards, and then the latest addition for our Council Rock health curriculum from 2012. So our first dimension, our learning standard objective for our students, students will be able to apply knowledge, attitudes, and behaviors towards achieving wellness and maintaining a healthy lifestyle. Students will have knowledge of the body and brain. And I think the way we wanted to write these is because health is a continuum and it can change over time, and so to be able to learn how to analyze what's going into my body, how do I feel in certain situations, and really be able to express myself in positive ways, were what we tried to use with the language that we put forth in, in our, in our literature and our documents. So what are indicators in trying to lead to those expectations and student, being able to identify components of healthy lifestyles, participate in healthy lifestyle activities, identify benefits of individual activities, and create an understanding of the areas of the brain, which is something that we've really tried to incorporate now, and how it affects the body with food and the different thoughts that we can have, that brain can affect different parts of our body as well. And so really wanted to share that with our first dimension. Moving into our second dimension, understanding personal emotion awareness and health as a set to manage mental health and our emotions that come forth with our mental health. Students will be able to identify healthy personal coping mechanisms for stress and mental health as well, is a part that also highlighted in our blueprint, is very important to our district and our community and also to our students as we've had conversations with them surrounding them. Indicators for this, identifying the emotions, what are the emotions that I'm feeling, being able to come up with healthy, positive strategies moving forward. Again, health is a continuum, things can change over time, so really trying to identify how to cope, not necessarily now, but as we move forward into post-high school and careers. The understanding and being able to express empathy, inducing desirable responses in others is something that we felt would be very important as an indicator for students to be able to leave with. And then explain positive situations or positive solutions to emotions that are expressed. So always trying to find the positive out of what we're doing and how we go about doing that. Dimension three would be enable students to use knowledge and develop skills that demonstrate resiliency in all aspects of a person's life. Resiliency is something that is allowing a person to move forward when bad things may happen or when good things may happen. And so to be able to understand how we can move forward was a really important part of what our curriculum and our committee found within dimension three. Indicators, apply sixteen habits of mind, age-appropriate, obviously K-12. Set age-appropriate goals, develop confidence and self-esteem, and then create motivation was something that was brought into the conversation and can be very positive across the board within education and within, within what was happening with our other curriculum review, and providing opportunities at an earlier age to become excited about the learning that it does happen here at Brighton. And then, again, as an emotional intelligence, how do I feel, how do I respond to those thoughts, and be able to create positive opportunities for myself moving forward. Our fourth, and I believe it's our final dimension, is students will understand that health is an ongoing component of a person's well-being, understanding healthy versus unhealthy behavioral choices. Again, not necessarily now, but when I go to wherever I go after high school and then into my future, it is really, really wanted to focus on with a lot of the language that we brought to you tonight and hopefully into the future. Apply knowledge of effects of substances, drugs, alcohol, food on situations and on the body and in the brain. Create short-term and long-term goals for continuous growth and development. Recognize consequences of unhealthy and risky behaviors, also very important for students to understand in the knowledge piece. Understanding how nutrition affects the body and the brain as well. Again, trying to really focus on the body and the brain and making the connection holistically with the entire person's health was what we wanted to really try to focus on. Within the curriculum area, we do have plenty of opportunity. We take advantage of that opportunity to work with our department, pretty much three through, through twelve, which would be the age groups and teachers that we have meeting, meeting with Danielle admins to help with planning, working over the summer on our curriculum, modifying things. Teachers three, twelve, we're given the opportunity to meet during the summer workdays. We were able to vertically align, try to recognize possible gaps, try to recognize where we had a little bit overlap, and if there was too much overlap, how would we be able to put in play a system to really deliver what the students would need and want, closing those gaps and ensuring appropriate conversations at each level was definitely a huge part of that conversation. There is time this summer to conceptualize and design new, new units and really take a look at where we came from with this experience working through the curriculum review. The next piece is we actually, during this process, started to learn more about Edoctrina, and so we've had a few at the high school level into Edoctrina, and then being able to get comfortable with the process and then be able to share that with the other areas, other age ages would be part of the process possibly this summer as well. Currently, there is not a system in place focusing on K-2 health education. Again, the most recent document dates back to 2012, 2013 school year. Curriculum is aligned, looking at the 21st century skills, including that paradigm shift and being able to work with communication, critical thinking, creativity, and then collaboration is something that we have with the spaces that we provide and the opportunities with assessments that are authentic and provide an opportunity for other students to learn from what our students are learning from our, our classes. Focus the Youth at Risk. Some of the data points up here are important. The Brighton Youth Risk survey is a nine through twelve administered survey. This year was to about 1,001 students, grades nine through twelve. A couple of the points really with the mental health piece that we wanted to bring and just make sure that we are aware that we're doing what we can at the earliest stages of development to prevent some of these things. During that Youth at Risk last year survey, fifteen point nine percent of our students have seriously considered attempting suicide. It's question twenty-two from the Youth at Risk survey. Twenty point seventy-six percent have hurt themselves cutting, burning without the intent of suicide, some of the pieces that we talked about, how to cope positively with some of the situations that do arrive, question twenty-six. And then the last one as a bullet, twenty-eight point nine four percent have serious difficulties concentrating, remembering, and making decisions because of a physical, mental, and/or emotional problem. Question twenty-six or twenty-seven, sorry about that. And so really trying to focus on how we can as a district make sure that we utilize our resources and put elements in at the earliest stages and then build upon them so that when they do leave our high school, they have the skill set to be able to go out and be what they want to be. Again, the nineteen-year study that also kickstarted some of the conversation with the importance at the K-2 level, our nineteen-year study of kindergarten students as they follow them through their career, the high school career into college, taking a look at social and emotional competence scores, leading to more likelihood of earning a college degree, which we felt was a very important thing to share in this process. Recommendation to explore possibilities, and so these, we have a few different slides with this. Our first recommendation is to explore possibilities of hiring a certified health, health education teacher at the K-2 level, where right now there is not one. That would hopefully be able to provide consistent and thorough education at the K-2 level. Above the mandate, Brighton a lot of times use mandates and creates our own mandates as to what our students need. Directly speaks, speaks to the Brighton blueprint and the students within our health and wellness. And then within that two, or at least be as creative as possible to address this level with our health education. Areas to address, disease transmission. Areas to address, disease transmission, right now there's a one thirty-minute lesson on mental health at this age group, so we feel that there might be an opportunity to improve upon that. Substance use, misuse, drugs, no lessons, digital citizenship, we have iPads within the building, but there is once every couple of years, not in the past, talking about how to be a digital citizen in a digital age. But, most resources are outdated, VHS not covered, teacher recommended, definitely part of the process in seeking out support and recommendation from those teachers that are in those classrooms. Diversity and tolerance would also be an element to discuss and have conversations around. See something, say something concept that we use at the high school, possibly to be put in play at other areas and levels as well. Safety in emergency, safety in emergency, not necessarily CPR, but to be able to know what to do if I was in an emergency where I needed to make a call. Our second recommendation piece here is at the high school level, to remove the community service project from the high school health curriculum, not remove it from the building, from our district, but to really be able to get the best and the most out of what a community service project can be for a student. Right now, the age of students limits opportunities because most students do take it at the sophomore year, so attending places rather than walking distances can be difficult. Transportation limitations, underprivileged students do suffer the most with this setup, and does prevent a positive experience. And so, I've spoken with many students that have come back and saying that their experience is volunteering with either a coach or somebody at RET, were some of the best in motivating elements and getting them to where they were at this point in their life. Some of the students are on the receiving ends of the efforts, which is kind of an imbalance system, so how can we modify that? And we feel that this would be a way to do that. It is graded right now as a final exam grade, should it shouldn't fail a course because of not the inability to drive to a volunteer service scheduled time. And then being able to have to take it during the year that health is offered can be difficult too, because we have athletes that run three sports and then also perform in plays and then are on school boards. And so, with that, how can we make sure that we are doing the best for our students in giving them a positive opportunity to serve others? Little continuation under the next slide here. Consider options with this, we do definitely value community service, and we do that in a number of different levels now. And so, be able, being able to modify how it is put towards the students and being able to have progressions within the same place over years, developing skills that we can as we learn in school, be able then to possibly take that post-high school as well. So, this would be an option possibly. Volunteering is an expectation, not a grade, kind of the idea of what we should be doing to give back to our community. Seventh grade already are three hours on the plate, eighth grade adding five hours, and then ninth grade right now, there is not really an expectation from our school, from our school. So, to be able to throw maybe five hours there, ten hours at the tenth grade level, and then continue to work with that as a student grows themselves and as they are learning more about what they want to become after high school. Right now, just for, it doesn't say here, it's twenty-five hours as an expectation or as a grade for the final exam at the tenth grade sophomore year. A couple of the things that did have the opportunity to speak with Dr. Hall, using Naviance to be able to log, so the counselors and administration would be able to see what that student did over those seven years to be able to write recommendations, so that they have that already in place. It would be also extending on the development that our counterparts that presented the curriculum before do as well, and creating the opportunity to input information into Naviance and prepare students for the next post-high school collegiate, wherever that student would go and be. Right now, students six twelve have the opportunity to use it, they have accounts for them, so it would be a good addition to that, and then also helping incorporate in clubs inside of school, outside of school, trips that travel across seas to be able to help in efforts would also be able to have with this expectation from our district. Link leaders and internships also. In lieu of a final exam, a couple of things could be splitting the semester fifty-fifty or possibly a mental health fair that students would be able to take information they learned from our mental health unit, which is a sixteen-day unit throughout the entire semester, always rechecking where we are with our body and our brain and being able to capitalize and move and make improvements. Mental health, physical and emotional health, kind of very similar to a conference, the person may attend in a profession and be able to share as an authentic assessment with their peers as to their findings, being able to use flex possibly as a time, thirty-minute period where students have the opportunity to join a space around the building, learning what they, that their classmates have prepared, being able to learn the presentation skills as well, boots pamphlets, time in the talks, examples such as CPR, addiction, suicide, mindfulness, yoga, different examples of what could happen on that day. And so, those are our three recommendations. Hopefully, we were able to spark some thought, and then if you have any questions, please feel free to ask. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you very much, John, and again, thank you to the entire committee for this work. You know, it does strike me after we talked about life skills and some of those other things before, personal finance, you know, health curriculum, I mean, every element that you reviewed in your slideshow and that the group, I'm sure, dug into way deeper, is so critical and crucial to our kids and their families and what they do, and you know, and when you hear sixteen days of mental, I mean, really? So, I guess one of the things that strikes me is as we move forward in Brighton, figuring out work we have done with regard to mental health review and all the work that you folks have done, and all the work that we know needs to be done beyond what the state says. It's interesting because there's so much work being done right now on mental health, physical health, it's health and the stigma around mental health, you know? So, it, I know our folks and we all together can figure out as we move forward, and all this group is nodding their head, so I'm really enthused, that we can really figure out a way to best serve our students. It just seems like there's not one element of what was presented here that's not really important, right? It is under the radar, and so many, you know, one of the elements that I'm looking forward to having discussion about is the volunteer aspect, because so many of our kids that have gone through health, the gating issue is the volunteer hours, not the health material so often, right?
Yep, absolutely.
Yep.
It's been a challenge for a long time, so that's great.
Any other questions or?
That was a great presentation.
Yeah, thank you so much.
John, you did a great job. The review was really thorough, and your presentation was awesome, and the CT eval, I would say the same thing. I think that this combined with the mental health review that was done with Carolyn's group and Lou's group, I think really gives us a lot to work from for several years to come in terms of just ramping up what we are doing. I think people are doing a really great job.
Oh, absolutely.
How do we continue that? So, it's really, really well done.
And the great, the great point you make is a point I think we always make when we listen to program review this time of the year, then we're enthusiastic about the next steps and all this great work and capturing it and moving it on and keep the conversation going and keep our teacher groups and our leader groups working and, you know, collaborating to bring things forward. So, fantastic, thank you, and again, to the entire team, thank you so much.
Thank you again.
So, lots of great reports this evening, and we'll try to keep that bar pretty high as we move into our financial and board member reports. First up, folks, we have our financial report, customarily prepared by Lou to Kevin and on to us, and also our treasures report for the period ending March thirty-first, passed on to us by Dahlia Watts, our Director of Finance, along with Lou. Does anybody have any question, comment, anything further? Then maybe we have a motion to accept those reports, please.
So, move.
Second.
Moved by Larry and seconded by Martha, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Our student representatives have done an excellent job this evening, so we'll move over to our standing Monroe County School Boards Association, standing committee reports, which, most of which will be kind of wrap-up tonight, although we'll always, we'll find out, we added some stuff. But anyway, first up, labor relations, Marv, that was April twenty-fifth.
Last meeting.
Yeah, that was.
Bruce Capron from Assistant Superintendent for, I believe, Administration, Honeyer Falls, Lima, talked about special ed, about cost, about the different classifications, and different ways to classify students. It was a very interesting session.
And that was the final labor relations of the year, right? Correct, and look, it started again early in September, so, thank you. Information exchange, that was April eighteenth, and that was that communication with Dan, right?
It was great, Dan did a great job, there were six or seven, maybe four or five, communication specialists from various districts, they all did a great job. Dan, thank you very much. It was, it was good information. He was clearly the best.
He was.
I mean, I didn't, yeah, I didn't want to brag.
Just for the minutes and everything?
I didn't want to brag.
His report out.
That is for the minutes, he was.
He was a part of an outstanding panel.
It was, it was a great panel, good information, good ideas.
Tremendous stellar panel of communications.
That's exactly right.
Thank you. I heard that was a very informative session.
It was.
And they dealt with some really difficult, they talked about
Yes.
how they deal with difficult issues, which unfortunately, every district has to face in one way or the other.
And they were good ideas, everybody had good ideas, and everybody was compassionate about how they approached things, and it was good.
But I think we walked away feeling we're in really good hands.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
Yeah, that we're doing it good.
We knew it, and now we really know it.
Dan's doing it.
That's why we go to these things, right?
That's right.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And they added tomorrow meeting.
I'm unable to go.
I know that, well, I will bring it up only because I talked to Sherry today.
Oh, okay.
Because they wanted to add the New York State
Yep.
ESSA plan, and Dan and Joanne, and I forget who else, are going to present that.
Uh, Dan.
And they changed the time too.
Joanne and Michelle Ryan.
Michelle, that's right, is doing it, because she's really sort of expert in the area, and it's, I think, four o'clock tomorrow.
It is.
Yep, four to five thirty.
I don't know, I know, I'm not a tacky.
I'm going.
Are you gonna go?
Yep.
Great, okay, great.
Tabby works sort of closely with Michelle, is getting all the information from her as well.
So, thank you very much, and again, so tomorrow, added info exchange, and we'll still have a report out on that. Legislative Committee, I can sort of combine, we met April eleventh and May second, and we may have a June meeting, we always keep that in sort of abeyance, pending. Have had a lot of discussion at Legislative Committee about two different papers, excuse me, the, the group has worked on some talking point papers, school safety and security, and a separate paper on mental health and wellness. And it's an interesting concept because they're certainly crossover, but our group determined early on that it's not the same thing, and some folks believe it is the same thing in some cases. But, so, I think you'll be pleased with those two different papers, and really, they're being, they're in draft form right now, they're talking point papers for board members to be able to utilize in terms of where we are legislative, what the law says, what options are for school districts, and it will also create then some talking points as we get into the next session with our legislators. The other thing we've been in the midst of is keeping track of the APPR legislation in the state legislature, which is advancing quite a bit, Dr. McGowan can touch on it in his report. Spring appointments with legislators, we had that Friday, Kevin, Marv and I were a part of the School Boards Association appointment with Joe Morelli. We had a real nice appointment with Joe, and actually, we had great conversation about a number of things, including a little, we got off topic a bit in terms of our talking points, but we had a great discussion about the future of funding for schools in New York State, some thoughts and ideas that Joe shared, and, you know, how that system might ever be fixed or ever be corrected or ever be appropriated equal, so that was, that was interesting. So, so anyway, we do have legislative meeting possible in April to wrap up
June.
Or in June. The only piece of legislate, legislation, and again, Kevin can touch further if he's got something new, that School Boards is watching aggressively at the state level is that APPR reform, and that, I think some version of it is going to get, did they get voted on today? They were pushing, but anyway, you'll bring us up to date on that. The only other reminder to us as a group, the School Boards Annual Meeting, May twenty-third, is in Penfield at Shadow Pines, Shadow Lake. And if you have Shadow Pines, you'd be out in the middle of the park.
Shadow Pines will be, yeah.
Bring your own.
Yeah, sandwiches.
Bring a blanket. Anyway, if you haven't let the office know that you're going to attend, please do that. So, anyway, those are those reports. Bosie's report, Marv, anything for us from Sora?
Well, the administrative budget was passed, and all the candidates were like, that's not a surprise.
Well, that's successful, and that's great, and we wish them all well, and.
Dan White is, some of you may know, is Acting Superintendent of Wayne Finger Lakes, and I believe Joanne Antonacci is going to do the search for the replacement for the district superintendent, and that's it.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Okay, our tradition this year of other board member reports, sort of a quick summary of the activities that we've been involved with since the last time we reported out on other board member reports. Julene, would you like to start?
Brighton believes today committee had a wrap-up report meeting last week, and the reports were great from all of the buildings, and everybody's looking forward to year number two being bigger and better than this past year.
Fantastic.
It was a very successful, very successful in so many ways.
A great place to start from, right?
It was, yeah.
So, thank you very much.
Thank everybody in the district who worked so hard.
Everybody, that was just, I think every corner of the district had an element of that, so thank you.
It was pretty impressive.
Great committee. Marv, anything?
Genesee Valley School Board Institute meets this Thursday, it's a regular meeting. Social Studies Review, Curriculum Review Committee, I think finished up a week and a half ago, and we're going to report out May twenty-second, and what a treat you guys are going to get. Andrea and I are going to, are going to present just an introduction. They've talked me out of giving you guys another math problem related to social studies, so.
No math problem.
We're very appreciative in advance to that committee and their knowledge, so thank you so much.
The tenure board.
Yeah, thank you very much, okay, well, we'll look forward to that.
Well, especially now that there's.
Now that we have a tidbit there, so, Martha, anything new from you?
It's a good teaser. Julene and I went to the High School Day of Action, we were able to attend that, that was what it was called, right?
April twentieth.
Yes, it was great, so proud of our kids and the civic awareness and responsibility that they displayed. We did the morning events, the booths set up, it was great, and also the rally for climate change in the afternoon, so, kudos to our kids once again, very proud of them.
Fantastic.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Larry, you?
We'll have an audit meeting at some point in May, and all that has to be rescheduled due to some calendar issues.
Yeah, we need, we'll get that tweaked a little bit because you have some travel, and we'll get that fixed.
And then just ongoing with the Construction Committee with all the work we've got coming over the next three years, and full day K coming in twenty twenty-one.
That's right.
What was your day?
We just need to keep messaging.
I have heard.
We will continue to do that, right? Andrea?
Marv hit on the social studies review, we're excited to present, and Wellness did not meet this month, we will meet, I think, next month, so, end of May.
Okay, great. Just, I'll just add a couple of things from my list of things. You know, what a great night, all of us, I think, were there, PTA's, PTSA Officer Installation Life Membership Night, that's always a wonderful celebration of adults, but kids and the, our students and the words that they submit in writing, or they're in person, or in video, verbally, in support of adults who've made a difference in their lives, and that's just a fun night, and we enjoy that. Number of us were at the Brighton Baseball Softball Parade and Opening Day on Saturday, which is always a great event in Brighton, and wonderful weather for our Second World Shortest Parade, and then the events at the middle school gym. But one quick thing I wanted to highlight, and we've all been there on this, and it's, I think, a really appropriate time. I served, as we all do, at the Ice Cream Socials, I did the French Road one, it would've been a week or so ago, so, let me just say this, if you have never attended Ice Cream Socials, Council Rock and French Road, you need to do that in both locations and just sit there and watch, because what you see in that evening, in a short period of time, is a variety of folks who come and go, a family in every definition that a family can be, extended families, non-English speaking families, every race, creed, color, faith, mostly multiple members, all sharing ice cream, sitting, running from one thing to the next and going out into the building. It's an under-the-radar thing in terms of representation of our community, but it is such a wonderful experience, and every year we do it, and I come away thinking the exact same thing, you know?
It's a cool place.
It's a cool place, and it's a cool event.
My husband says that too, because he usually comes to colleges, it's a green.
You meet people and start talking to people who are so appreciative and so happy and feel so included and welcome, and it's just, it's just a wonderful set of events. So, I thank the PTSA and our building folks at both schools, but, but parents mostly who come and support it, I'm sure we'll hear from Emily, but I think all of the nights this year were fantastic, and I think overall, very, very successful.
And the Brewster's Ice Cream, I think, was very good.
And the ice cream is a big hit now, I think they really have a winner there, so, so thank you very much, and I will now turn it over to the Brighton Teachers Association, and I'm sure we touched on some of your elements, Beth, we usually do, but you have much more for us.
I do, and it's, it's super exciting to report this week, especially since it's Teacher Appreciation Week, love to shout out everything that's going on, so you do have the report, lots of.
You know, every week is Teacher Appreciation You know, every week is Teacher Appreciation Week in Brighton.
Right, but you're right, but this one in particular is really exciting to set a board meeting.
Official designation.
And I had, I asked for lots of shout-outs and got lots of shout-outs, so that's really exciting. Even at the end of the year when it's so busy, teachers still want to share everything that's going on. So at Council Rock, over seventy second graders participated in a five-week online course focusing on reading biographies about people who helped create change in the community and the world. Students read biographies of their choice and responded to weekly assignments using a blog. All things that little elementary kids are doing, all of this great technology.
That's right.
The final assignment allowed students to explore and reflect on how they might help to create change in their own community. It's having young children making a difference and that was from Judy Wegman. Also going out at Council Rock, in a study of community, the second graders in the Extended Studies Cluster Group researched community organizations and then they planned and executed some fundraisers. The groups raised four hundred and forty-eight dollars for Wild Wings, five hundred and ten dollars for Daystar, and six hundred and thirty-seven dollars for Lab Lover's Rescue. So a representative from each of those organizations visited the classes to share with children how the money would be spent. The students used their habits of mind to help their community and they are very proud of their efforts. That's from Judy Wegman again and Andrea Yaman. Also again at Council Rock, they recently celebrated Earth Week and many students were able to take a virtual field trip under the sea. Through the use of Google Expeditions, the students traveled to the Pacific Ocean. As they were exploring the ocean, the oohs and ahs could be heard as they came across a humpback whale. We all know they had that whale experience earlier in the fall as well, brain coral and some scuba divers. One of the favorite experiences was seeing what the sun looked like from a hundred feet below in the ocean. It looked about as bright as a flashlight. Through this virtual field trip, the students were able to view the beauty of the ocean and realize how important it is for humans to help keep our oceans clean. And that's from Kathy Hutter. At French Road, we had Robin Ackerman, Ashley Rhodes, who's from Council Rock, and then Katie Fallon. They teamed up, the three of them, and wrote a mini grant and they did it around the maker spaces. That's kind of the new buzzword in terms of what are we doing in our classes to help kids that maybe won't be academically strong but are really good with their hands or wanting to build things, engineering. So those three of them, they stocked up their classrooms with reusable building supplies and they're using them for many STEM activities in their classroom. So that's really cool. Lori Iannello from our music department, she said French Road students in the bands, orchestras and choruses are enjoying performing, they enjoyed performing the National Anthem on the field at the Red Wings Stadium last week. And in their music classes, students are singing, dancing and playing instruments to music from around the world, across the cultures. And our assembly year begins again tomorrow at French Road, so there'll be a lot of that going on as well. Lisa Button, Vocal Music at Council Rock, it's been a really busy couple of months, she says, for the young musicians at Council Rock. In March, they were busy learning dances and drumming songs for our open house. And then they also were visited by an Eastman to go quintet and students loved learning about woodwinds and the beautiful music they played. And in this past month, they've been incorporating the earth in terms of focus, water, ocean conservation into their music classroom with song, movement, ensemble and game activities. Katie Covert's class from French Road, she's been riding back and forth with pen pals from the Jewish home of Rochester. And they were lucky enough to go on a field trip last week there to meet them. It was an amazing opportunity for all and something that they loved being a part of. And so hopefully she'll have some pictures to share the next time for that particular report. We've got a first grade teacher at Council Rock, Liz File, she's been exploring the engineering process in many ways this year. Each student in their class was given four materials to use to create a bird's nest. Pipe cleaners, fabric pieces, string and twist ties. Using some or all of these materials, the task was to create a bird's nest with the goal of being able to hold one real chicken egg. The students loved working independently to create the nest and then evaluated and reflected on their construction when they tested the nest with the real eggs. Eric Morris shared with us that on April 10th, his fourth period economics class participated in a live video discussion with students in Israel. The Israeli students had been studying the human and social impacts of the loss of Jewish rights in Europe during the run-up to World War II. While the Brighton High School students were studying the broader economic impacts of discrimination and human rights abuses. Both students exchanged knowledge and perspective through a live dialogue, building a human-to-human connection across six thousand miles and seven time zones. So that was really exciting. From Council Rock and the Phys Ed Department, the students continued to learn about lifetime fitness activities. They explored their PE mantra, "If you sit, you won't get fit," by participating in a demonstration about karate. A local karate sensei came to the PE classes and taught them basic principles and karate moves. And they also taught the kids that martial arts teach important life skills and character-building lessons of respect, focus, persistence, self-discipline, courage and confidence. Students learned about three keys of focus, your mind, the eyes and body, and three rules for not fighting, walk, talk and tell. Some of the skills they learned included the front kick, side kick, jump kick and a blocking kata. The moves were also combined into a twelve-move pattern of blocking skills. So health of both body and mind are so critical to the overall health of our children and adults. This was a really great opportunity to show students that. Rick La Paglia from French Road, he wanted us to know that they've concluded the donation for collecting for the Jump Rope for Heart. The total for this year is ninety-five thousand, five hundred dollars. So they earned a five hundred dollar US Games gift certificate at the national conference that they did in Nashville in this past March. They won that for the amount of being the number one school last year, where you still don't know what the results are this year, but I'm sure that will come soon. But they decided to donate the certificate to needy school in Westchester County. So Rick is pleased to report that Mount Vernon Elementary School is this year's recipient and Melanie McMullin is the school's PE teacher and was thrilled to use the money to purchase new equipment for their field day. So that was a nice community service piece and wonderful that Rick was able to do that. Lori Isom from the French Road instrumental teacher piece, they are busy preparing, as I said, fifth grade ensembles for their spring concerts. The Fres Orchestra and fifth grade chorus are looking forward to combining to perform Happy Sparkle Unicorn. We're gonna get to hear that tomorrow, apparently. That's the assembly. And the Fres bands will combine for a very special performance with RPO trumpet player Herb Smith in honor of Lois Mahalco's retirement. So that'll be exciting to hear. They're also preparing our fourth grade instrumental students for their final concert of the school year and we will, I know, be amazed for their growth from what we've heard from the fall. And Debbie Parker, she also wanted to give a great shout-out for everyone who performed at the Red Wings game. Luckily, the weather held out and everything was great. My last couple of pieces, each year the TCMS and PTSA's Colastic Book Fair. That local organization has chosen to receive books purchased from the book fair with student faculty donations. This year, the TCMS Student Council chose Owen's House, a crisis nursery formed in honor of Owen Thomas, a Brighton High School grad, as the recipient. On April 30th, Student Council Treasurer Josie Hastings presented Kate Ceruley, founder of Owen's House, with an array of great books for their library and a card of appreciation and those pictures are up on the website as well, included with your report. And last but certainly not least, Sue Gillespie, Brighton High School German teacher. She wanted to let us know that Liza Summers, a junior Brighton High School German student, has been awarded an all-expense-paid summer study scholarship trip to Germany. Liza was selected as a national winner after scoring in the ninety-fifth percentile on the Level Four 2018 National German Exam for High School German Students Sponsored by the American Association for Teachers of German. After qualifying with a high score on the national exam, she submitted responses to several short essays in German and was then interviewed in German by a committee made up of high school teachers and college professors. No easy feat. So Liza is the eighteenth Brighton High School student to win one of these travel study awards since 1986 and she will travel to Germany this summer with forty-four other national winners from June 21st to July 15th. Lots of wonderful things going on.
Thank you very much, Beth. A lot going on this time of year, as we all know, and thank you very much. We appreciate that.
Sure.
Emily from the Brighton PTSA.
At Council Rock, the Ice Cream Socials were a great success. The book fair was also very successful. There was Let's Chat Council Rock in April, a tea with friends. Planning is underway for staff appreciation luncheon on May 25th. At French Road, there was a meeting with the principal and Chief Mark Henderson discussed bike and pedestrian safety. Fres is doing a yearbook this year. They also had two Ice Cream Socials and they have an author visit coming up, Brian Yennis. At Twelve Corners, there was a meeting with the principal in conjunction with the Special Ed Committee and it was on executive functioning and very, a very popular presentation. They're doing their staff appreciation tomorrow. And the eighth grade closure party is June 16th and PTSA is looking for volunteers. At Brighton High School, Senior Bash is coming up. They're also looking for volunteers and they had a meeting with the principal in which there was a budget review and also a talk about safety, including social media positivity, texting and driving, vaping and more. May's PTSA meeting is tomorrow at nine fifteen in this room.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Emily. Appreciate the update. Dr. McGowan, superintendent report.
A few quick items. One, I'm not sure if you've heard, but there's a vote next Tuesday, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM at the high school and spaghetti dinner, hell, a spaghetti dinner as well. So best wishes to everyone and we look forward to people coming out to vote. If they have questions about the proposed budget, we're happy to answer those in advance or certainly there. Any information people are looking for, we'll let them know that we give them. We're really excited. In the next month or so, prior to the end of the year, we'll be putting out a really interesting concept. I don't want to say a survey because we do a lot of surveys, but it's a similar idea of asking people how we're doing and to get feedback from them. And it's called a thought exchange. And it allows people to enter comments, pose questions and for everybody who enters the exchange, which would be all community members, to see those comments and to star them, to enter their own and then to star them. So similar to liking in social media, or I guess not liking if they don't get a lot of stars. But in other words, it forms a community around ideas and people get to really see them, what other people are thinking. And they analyze those, provide us then with trends, so we really get a good handle on the things we can improve on and the things we're doing well and the things people would like to see more of by engaging with the community. So really excited about that. People get more information as that rolls out. We're also thinking about how to take the massive amount of information that we provide to people and give that to people in ways that are more user-friendly, quick, easy to read. So in other words, Dan does an unbelievable job of putting out every single piece of information in this district that people could possibly want, as do our principals, as do everybody who sends out an e-news. We're thinking about how to then take the New York Times and put that out in a way that is quick and easy to access and distills the information away the way it's presented, so you can see that quickly and really get a handle on all the things that are happening. It's there, but how do you put it in a way, almost like taking the New York Times and putting it in the USA Today. Colorful, bright, here's the quick bottom line. So in other words, things like full day K, don't forget, coming in 2021. I'm not sure if that's come up or not.
Good example.
Safety, security, these are the things we're looking at. Or Startimes, you know, there was a Facebook exchange recently had, because people had asked questions about that. And in the longest Facebook comment ever, I gave kind of what the most recent information was. But it was a good reminder about the need to regularly say, well, the committee's been meeting because there were people that are not associated with it or don't know the PTSA reps or haven't communicated about that that said, oh, this is good. I didn't know where the district was on that or that there had been all these meetings or all this information was available. So with links to deeper information, but quick ways to communicate that. So we'll be rolling that out over the next several weeks as well and just want to make sure people are looking for that. Also in that infographic format, it lends itself better to Facebook, Twitter and the places where people are getting information. They're not, we recognize, getting as much, although we put a lot in email. People are migrating to different formats and we want to make sure we're using all of the formats, all the places where people are gathering their information. And once again, just staff appreciation. Our staff here does an incredible job with our kids each and every day. We appreciate that. It's this great acumen they have in terms of being great instructors, but as caregivers with people who have an exceptional ethic of care are always thinking about all the needs of kids each and every day. We just want them to know how much we appreciate that. And although that's been expressed certainly from you and from me and by principals as well, from principals in buildings and sent to them, I think publicly acknowledging, so the community knows that, that sentiment is expressed by the people that work with them and supervise them every day. They're simply the best and we appreciate that. So wanted to make sure I mentioned that as well. Any questions for me?
Very well said, Kevin. And I will add from the Board of Education, it's a great partnership. We're collaborative partners and we have a wonder relation, wonderful relationship with our teachers and our entire staff, really. And so it is nice to speak of this on this official day, but I do think we try to, as often as we can, you know, we interact on all the different committees and councils and events that we're all at together. We're in classrooms, we work with teachers all the time and we, we're so fortunate in Brighton, the group that we do have here and it is, we never forget that. So thank you for bringing that up again. A couple of items of business to close out the evening, folks. Maybe we have a motion to approve the election inspectors for the annual district vote as outlined in the memo from Kim.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Larry and seconded by Martha. Just a reminder, we're required to utilize three inspectors with the use of the optical scanning machines that are on the Monroe County Board of Elections list. So these are those three individuals. And we're approving that now. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. A motion then pleased to approve a mini bid for a light utility vehicle, light utility vehicles, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Julene, seconded by Marv. Again, this is a replacement vehicle through the Office of General Services Procurement Division. So it's a, it's a sort of, not a group bid, but a collaborative bid-type process that the state uses and we're gonna go ahead and use that bid ability to replace a utility vehicle for our Buildings and Grounds area. Anybody have anything further on that question, Karen? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then a motion pleased to approve our consent agenda for this evening?
So moved? Second.
Moved by Andrea, seconded by Martha. The consent agenda this evening does include one gift. We're appreciative of a donation from Pearson in the amount of one hundred dollars for our student awards ceremony at BHS at the conclusion of the 2017-28 school year to celebrate a student who demonstrates ability and effort in Spanish studies. So we accept that and thank them for their donation. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Dr. McGowan, anything further this evening?
No.
Board members, any other items of business? Then we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Marv.
Second.
Seconded by Larry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.